Okay. If we could all stand for the pledge, appreciate it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Russell, if you do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Breckus?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. First and foremost, we would like to do recognition of Davie Fire Chief Julie Downey. So, we want to congratulate you. I want to say it was a pleasure and an honor sitting with you and your husband the other night at that event. Thank you.
It was great, but he got a bigger piece of meat. I've seen that.
Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, county administrator.
Is that mic on? Get that mic on. They're going to turn it on.
Okay. So, I want to go over a few things with you tonight. So, first, I want to thank you and your staff for diligently working on the new module fire stations, the station number 112 and 82. We know how much time and effort have gone into this project, and we appreciate all the commitment and hard work to get this completed. And we know it's soon. We walked over there. We were there today, did a little walk-through, and it's looking great. So, thank you very much. Our personnel can't wait to move in, so we're really looking forward to that. So, thank you. I want to introduce you to our new emergency manager, John Antapisus. Come up, John. John's been with us for a couple of months now and getting his feet wet, so I wanted to bring him and introduce you to you, introduce him to you. John holds a master's degree in public administration from Florida State University. He has over eight years of experience in emergency management from throughout the country, and he grew up here in Coral Springs, Florida. While at FSU, he was employed at the office of Governor Crist, and after seeing the devastation of Hurricane Katrina, he realized his calling after graduation was to serve people in crisis. John began his career in emergency management, working in the private sector, assisting recovery operations in impacted communities in Louisiana after Hurricane Katrina. After leaving the private sector, he took a position with Washington DOT as Emergency Program Manager, and he coordinated his agency's emergency response for the OSO mudslide, which was a presidentially declared disaster, and claimed the lives of 43 people and closed a major state road for over 30 days. John returned to Florida and was the deputy emergency coordinator over in Tampa Fire Rescue, where he managed the city's EOC for several storm-related weather events, including Hurricane Irma, Tropical Storm Colin, and citywide flooding, as well as large-scale special events, like some college football playoff championship. We are now happy to have John join our team, and he has already been very active conducting Hurricane Irma after-action meetings and writing the improvement plan for Hurricane Irma. He's written several grants already for us and assisted with our CERT, and just today we conducted our town-wide hurricane exercise. I'm certain with John's preparation, the town of Davie will be better prepared to respond to and cover from all types of hazards. And I wanted to introduce you to him and have him say a couple of words.
Awesome.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm just very grateful to be joining the team and looking forward to working with you guys to prepare both our towns and our communities, so that when another hurricane does come to our area, that we are better prepared to respond and recover faster. So, appreciate the time. Thank you.
Awesome. Welcome aboard.
So, now I have several other items that I would like to share with you, and this has truly been an exciting year for Davie Fire Rescue. We're calling it our triple crown year, so I'm going to go over a few items with you. So, on July 11th, the 28th Annual Excellence in EMS Award Ceremony was held in conjunction with the State of Florida EMS Advisory. During the award ceremony, Steve McCoy, the State of Florida Department of Health EMS Section Director, advised us and stated, "The Davie Fire Rescue Department is the recipient of the EMS Provider of the Year Award for 2018." And he further stated, "My staff and I know how deserving your department is of this recognition that pays tribute to Florida's real-life heroes. The annual excellence in EMS award recognizes the outstanding efforts of the men and women who serve their community through injury prevention and other EMS education activities, as well as saving lives on the front line of Florida healthcare system." So, during the ceremony, we just went over a few of the items that we were recognized for, so I'm just going to give you just a few highlights. During 2017, we delivered and hosted the very first Florida Resuscitation Academy and trained over 300 healthcare providers in Broward County on the best practices for treating patients who have a cardiac arrest, so severe heart attack. This program was also presented to the Florida Medical Directors Association and at the state EMS meetings, and is now the model training program and is being considered for statewide use for all fire rescue agencies and emergency rooms. We posted our highest-ever cardiac arrest survival rate, so someone that survives from a severe heart attack in 2017, our record history in our history at 60 percent. That's doubling our previous record, and the national average for surviving a cardiac arrest is about 20 percent.
Wow.
So, that's one of the things that we were recognized for. Also, our town AED ordinance last year was updated to include the Stop the Bleed kits. You know, we've talked about that before, and we've installed the Stop the Bleed kit in your AED here. We got a recent grant, and we put the Stop the Bleed kits in over 400 of the AED cabinets that we have in the town. So, the ones that are required, AEDs in large businesses, your Home Depots, Publix, over 35,000 square feet, we have ordinance that they have to have AEDs. Well, now they have Stop the Bleed kits as well. So, if anybody has severe bleeding for any reason, people can be prepared to assist. And we've also offered free training, and we have over 1,700 people trained so far, and we would be happy to come in and assist you guys and hold a class here if you would like to have that training. We've created multiple public education campaigns on CPR, AED, and Stop the Bleed on CERT, which starts September 18th. So, if you'd like to have any of your residents take that class, they need to just go on and register, and they can come and join us. John and Battalion Chief Meyer are the two instructors now for that, so we'd love to have the Southwest Ranches residents join us. We have the car seat installation program, and we offer a lot of various other educational campaigns. At the award ceremony, Chief Gonzalez and Chief Moran and I attended the ceremony, and we accepted our award on behalf of all the men and women in our department, and we were presented with the plaque.
Very nice, very nice. One thing I neglected to say when I made your announcement was that you are the FFCA 2018 Fire Chief of the Year.
Yes.
So, that's an award she got.
And we're coming to that. I told you, I have the triple crown. So, there's the first, there's the first one. The second one, our ISO. Last night at Davie council meeting, the National Director of the Community Hazard Mitigation Services for Insurance Service Office, ISO, Tom Weber, presented to our council and announced September 1st, 2018, the town of Davie and Davie Fire Rescue will be awarded a Class I Public Protection Classification Rating. Very exciting for us. This Class I rating is the highest possible score that can be given to any fire department nationwide. Throughout the United States, there are over 47,000 fire departments, and only 329 in the country have a Class I rating, and only 32 in Florida. This rating reflects the hard work and dedication of all the Davie Fire Rescue personnel, from the newest firefighter through our Fire and Life Safety Division with our prevention and education, our civilian staff came together, our administrative staff, everyone came together to make this a success and showed our commitment to saving lives and property. And we have our full report that we went over last night, and they had said, Tom Weber, the CEO, said that this is the first time he saw a perfect score in the fire prevention area. So, we were really excited about that. He said that we're going to be a model community for the fire prevention and fire education program. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Napolitano for a minute to announce the third.
Okay.
Good. Mayor McKay, town councilmembers, Mr. Burns. My name is Rain Napolitano, and I am an Assistant Fire Chief with Davie Fire Rescue and the Fire Department Liaison with Town of Southwest Ranches. On July 18th, during the Florida Fire Chiefs Association Executive Development Conference Awards Banquet, the Florida Fire Chiefs named their Florida Fire Chief of the Year for 2018. This award, the most important honor the Florida Fire Service can bestow upon one of its chief fire executives, was conceived to recognize truly outstanding fire chiefs whose acts and deeds in their profession, home, community, and county, serve as an example and challenge for all other chief fire executives throughout Florida. The selection criteria emphasizes leadership, innovation, professional development, integrity, service to the public, and contributions to the fire service as a whole. All of the nominees, fire service activities, and accomplishments are considered, with a special emphasis placed on the period from 2017 through early 2018. The Florida Fire Chief of the Year for 2018 was awarded to Davie Fire Chief Julie Downey. Chief Downey received two separate nominations along with numerous letters of support. Chief Downey is well-known and respected by everyone in the fire service community and has provided the leadership necessary to make Davie Fire Rescue a premier fire rescue agency. Chief Downey, throughout her distinguished career, has been involved not only in her department, but regionally, statewide, and nationally. She is the Secretary of the Fire Chief Association of Broward County, a member of the Florida EMS Advisory Council Medical Care Committee, Disaster Response Committee, Community Surge Committee, and serves on the National Committee for NFPA 3000 Active Shooter Hostile Event Response. Quoting the award presenter, Fire Chief Darryl Donato of the Florida Fire Chiefs Association, "Throughout the nomination and letters of support received, there were pages and pages of Chief Downey's accomplishments. However, what stood out the most was Chief Downey's genuine commitment to do what is best for her department, the firefighters within her department, and the community they serve, and to do that passionately and without ego. On behalf of the Davie Fire Rescue Department, it's a distinct honor and privilege to serve under Chief Downey's leadership for a fire rescue department that is second to none and that proudly serves the Town of Southwest Ranches."
So, when they did the announce the, my name at the award ceremony and the installation dinner, I was totally surprised. I really had no idea. But as they start going through the speech, and it was a very long speech, I told them, it gets to a point that you're like, wait, yeah, wait a minute. That timeline is, that's matching my timeline. Wait a minute. And so, I was totally surprised, but definitely humbled and honored to accept the award. One of the things that they talked about in the, some of the letters, is I did start the fire service when I was a cadet at 14, and I want to encourage anyone out there that's interested in being a firefighter to join a cadet, a junior firefighter program. We have a pretty active one, and just would encourage anyone to do that. It helped me, guided me throughout my career. I always look back at those days as being some of the best days, a lot of fun, a lot of camaraderie, and really started me on the right track. I have been in the fire rescue service for over 35 years, and I truly believe that this is the best profession in the world. The word "team" is said to represent "together everyone accomplishes more." All of these accomplishments, our triple crown, are clearly a result of teamwork. We have an amazing team at Davie Fire Rescue, and every day, they make me proud. All of these accomplishments are a testament to our hard-working men and women and a tribute to our leadership team at our department and the support of our town council and our town administration, and we certainly appreciate all of the, your support as well. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Awesome. Thank you. Do we need to go down and get a picture? I think we need to go down for a picture.
You can, Mayor, but I thought you and some of their, I have some comments I'd like to make, but I assume you and the rest of the council.
All right, so we're going to make some comments, but when we're done, we're going to come down for a picture.
Well, one thing that stands out in my mind, after being there at the dinner with you and your husband, even though he got the bigger piece of meat, was that both of yous are chief of fire department, you here in Davie and him in Miami. I mean, two in a family, that's incredible. What I thought was really funny is he said, made a comment, and he says, "Well, you can tell who wears the pants in the family." And Julie came back and said, "Oh, you do, honey. I just tell you which ones to wear." Again, it's a great honor. We're very proud of you, Julie. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick word as well. I went through the CERT programs, I think where I first met you, and just really appreciated getting to know you and the leadership of that program and getting everybody involved and how important that is, and so, thank you for that. But, boy, we're just proud to partner with the town of Davie, partner with you all, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you too. You know, the fire department is big in my family, all my kids, grandkids are in there, so I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Chief Downey, I just want to say thank you for your efforts, and I consider our town to be very lucky that we're right next door to Davie, and we have access to your department and your abilities. And I want to say thank you again, once again.
Thank you.
Awesome. I'm just going to ditto everything everybody said there. You all are amazing, fabulous. We're thrilled to be able to have a relationship with you all moving forward, and if there's anything we need or you need help with that fire station out there that we just got, getting completed on or whatever, please let us know.
Thank you.
So...
Appreciate it.
Yeah, Mayor.
Andy, go ahead.
Chief, I just want to extend the same congratulations everyone else has. Well-deserved recognition for you and your team. So, congratulations. You and Rudy are a pleasure to work with, and I thank you for that on a personal and a professional level. You guys do make it easy. Now, I mentioned to you before, and I just want to tell the council, the only thing that we have outstanding on the new modular unit, the only thing that's pending is our final fire inspection. So, I'm hopeful that the chief may know somebody who can help us with that.
Should be done tomorrow. Yes, we're very hopeful that we have a working fire alarm system, and we can get that taken care of.
I heard a rumor, we got partially moved in?
A few things got moved in. Yes, yes, but I'm sure a lot of that will be happening tomorrow. We're definitely excited about that.
Can we go down in front and get a picture, everybody?
They're next. I already talked to them. Be ready. Okay.
Put footprints down. Stand on your footprints.
Big smiles.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have two speakers.
All right, public comment.
Mayor, we have two public comments tonight. The rules are in the agenda, Noel Hollisworth and Gay Chapels are only two speakers.
Okay.
And they're not numbered, so I don't know who's first.
Noel, let him fight it out.
Noel, you're up.
Good evening. Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. With the bulk pickup, we had the thrashing of our provider, and yesterday, they didn't pick up bulk out west. Today, they picked up about between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock. So, they're running back to what they were doing before. Someone needs to keep the fire under their feet. They heard lots of comments a couple of meetings ago, and we got very good service for one or two pickups, and now we're back to, well, we're running late with the rest of the town, so out west, we'll get them by Friday, Saturday, whatever. And here it is, you know, Thursday, late because I called today and yelled and screamed at Sandy a little bit. Please, that was my screaming. And so, but I was told that they had two trucks that were down. Well, I'm sorry, this afternoon, there was four or five trucks that were racing up and down 199th, one going north, one going south, passing each other, fighting for the bulk. And so, I think they could get enough trucks out to finish the job on the day that it's supposed to be out, and I would like for the town to do something about it, because I understand there's penalties, and it's about time where, since they've been doing it, you know, taken over the contract, we've gotten very bad service overall on bulk pickup out west, and I think that needs to be cured completely and totally. Anyway, so, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Gay.
You're such a bad person. The Comprehensive Plan Board had a meeting, and with all this tweaking that they did, they voted all but one person voted to send it to you guys, and I would hope that you guys would turn around and send it right back to them, because I wasn't there, but what I heard would literally put almost everybody that's a working person in this town for sales signs and out of here. I'm going to tell you something really quick. Ivanhoe is a community that has an HOA, and they run their own show. Davie is, it's in Davie, but they have their own little rules and regulations. A young man came over that's a friend of my grandson's, and he bought a house in there, oh, maybe 10 years ago, and he was very happy. He had an airboat, he works, well, he used to leave his garage door open. Now, they have, they're getting tweakier and tweakier, and now he's not allowed, they fined him $250 for his airboat. He had to move it, get it out ASAP, 24 hours' notice, keep his garage door down, and a whole list of other problems. Sometimes, we make laws, we have enough laws on our books now to enforce, but we have people that are offensive at what they're doing. So, we make more laws to go after that one person, but while we're making it for the one person, we're knocking out the rest of the community. I don't even want to get into what was in there, but I just would hope that this board, our council would send it back to the board and let them really work on this thing. And if you're going to fix it for a couple of people that are offensive, be very careful, because the way it's written, now, you can, you can't, if you're a nursery, you can't move your equipment off your property. If you even have equipment on your property, you can't take it off. You can only have one tractor and one trailer. You're going to have an airboat. You can't have a seadoo and two boats. It's bizarre. If you really look at it, it's really not for this town. And so, I would hope that you would do that and send it back and let them really work on it and see if the laws aren't already there. The other thing is that I have an A1, A2 zoning.
You need another minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have an A2, A1 zoning. Before we became a town, 55 years ago, I went down there and they took an acre of my property for Sterling Road and for Dyke Road. In that process, I was adamant that they give me $1, and we exchanged in writing the property and the zoning, and the zoning would not change. The A1, A2 would allow me to function the way I want it. If they had blanketed me, which they wanted to do with an E1, I would have lost 15 of my rights as an A1. So, I still maintain my A1, A2, but I noticed when I requested it, a lot of my rights are gone, that the town tweaked right out on me, and I wasn't aware of it. I didn't know. So, how many more of my A1 rights are you going to take away from me? When I was there before Broward County, I told them, "I'll tell you what. You can do what you want to do. I want a million dollars for putting me out of business, and I want my land back." And Lori Parrish said to the lawyer, "Is that right?" And he said, "Yeah." So, she said, "Keep your A1, A2."
Any additional public comment? Even though somebody didn't fill out a card, you can fill out after the fact if you want to come up and speak. Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Board reports. Any board reports?
We have one other speaker, Mayor.
Oh, we do? Sorry.
Seeing no other?
I told you to stand up.
Well, I wait for my name. Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. I want to echo Noel's comments to a much more minor extent. We still haven't had our bulk picked up on 198th. When I was coming here tonight, no bulk. It's up and down the road. Should have been picked up on Wednesday. They used to come early in the morning, used to be great, except for when they blocked the road, but we'll go there another time. I agree with Noel. You guys negotiated damages, and if you remember, in one of the negotiation meetings, they said, "The reason your garbage is going up is partly to cover these damages that the town wants." If you remember that. Well, you know what? It's time to start getting some of our money back. What have they had the contract now for? Six months, give or take? And we're coming back into hurricane season, and here we are. They're not doing a good job, in my opinion, as well. You've heard the discussions on the damages they're doing. You've heard constantly from him and from me from time to time that they're not picking up based on the schedule. So, I mean, at this point, I think you all need to do something about it, because we're getting suckered right now. I wanted to talk about the points that Gay made. There's one thing I wanted to clarify, and you all were there. The board really wasn't comfortable. We were asking Jeff, "Why does this have to happen so quickly? Why can't we continue to discuss?" And if you remember, we left it at, "We'll review what he's, he's put together." I think Emily circulated that on Tuesday. I read it. I think it does need more time. I agree with Gay in that, I mean, we didn't vote to send it forward. We voted to take a look at it, and if we were comfortable, then send it forward, but I don't think we are, so... the road, but we'll go there another time. I agree with Noel. You guys negotiated damages. And if you remember, in one of the negotiation meetings, they said, "The reason your garbage is going up is partly to cover these damages that the town wants." Do you remember that? Well, you know what? It's time to start getting some of our money back. What have they had the contract now for? Six months, give or take? And we're coming back into hurricane season, and here we are. They're not doing a good job, in my opinion, as well. You've heard the discussions on the damages they're doing. You've heard constantly from him and from me, from time to time, that they're not picking up based on the schedule. So, I mean, at this point, I think you all need to do something about it. Because we're getting suckered right now. I wanted to talk about the points that Gay made. There's one thing I wanted to clarify. And you all were there. The board really wasn't comfortable. We were asking Jeff, why does this have to happen so quickly? Why can't we continue to discuss? And if you remember, we left it at, we'll review what he's put together. I think Emily circulated that on Tuesday. I read it. I think it does need more time. I agree with Gay in that, I mean, we didn't vote to send it forward. We voted to take a look at it, and if we were comfortable, then send it forward. But I don't think we are. So I know that it needs more work. And this is something that is so important to our residents, both the people that have nursery operations and their neighbors around them, that we shouldn't push this to be on some sort of a timetable that is too short. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Speak up. Okay. Public comment is closed. Board reports.
Just in case, some of the public who usually stop me somewhere and ask me questions about what's going on. The property where they're holding the fill, the five acres in Meadow Sanctuary, they're keeping it clean, it's, they're moving fill in there still. That fill has a year there or less. And that's what that is, on the west corner, the southwest corner of Dykes and Griffin. On Meadow Sanctuary, they're digging and bulldozing, and they're getting pretty much a grip on getting the water moving to the east. And that's going to be like a wetland water retention area in Colusa Corners. As far as the memorial that we have on Flamingo and Griffin, we approved it, the board did, but we really have not been privy to, mainly because we've had two meetings that have been canceled. We've watched it, and it looks like it's about ready to be dedicated. But I don't know when that dedication is going to happen. So I'm sure that the town administrator will fill you in on that. The park out west is, it looks real green in the wintertime, and had a lot of stones. I don't know, I haven't been out there myself, but right now, it looks really solid as far as grass is concerned. But I think that we would have to really walk it to make sure that the stones are pretty much covered by the rocks. At any rate, that's it. We haven't had a meeting for two months, and hopefully, we're going to have one in August. Thanks.
Any additional board reports? There we go.
Good evening, Mayor Vice Mayor, Council members. George Moore speaking on behalf of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. Just want to update you, we had elections at our last meeting. And with respect to the recording secretary was Josh Dykes, and vice chair was Bob Hartman, and I was elected chair. So here I am.
Congrats.
Thank you. One of the things that Bob brought up with respect to the nursery operations within the town, et cetera, was, we did discuss it, Jeff Cadums was there, I believe all you were there as well. It is very complicated. There are certain things in that, those rules and regulations that we, I don't believe everybody is comfortable with, that we want to review it. We didn't actually approve it and ask for it to be forwarded to council, as Gay may have insinuated. But we actually asked Jeff to write up everything and then send it to us so we could review it, then potentially forward it to the council. But as chair, I'm going to request more time. We definitely need to review it again and really hash out the different details and analyze it.
I'm good with you all hanging on to it. Everybody else okay with that?
It is that important that I think we really should have it.
As chair, you know you can call a special meeting. You aware of that?
Well, being that I'm new at it.
Okay, no, but I'm making you aware. You can call a special meeting of the board members.
Perhaps we might do that. I'll discuss that with Emily.
You might want to think about that.
Yeah. Because it is really important, and it is a fundamental part of our town. And we want to make sure we get it right. And there are a lot of things we need to go over and really consider on behalf of everybody in the community. So that's something that, that's as far as where we're at right now. So I don't believe it's going to get forwarded to you. We definitely need more time. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional board reports? Seeing none? Board report is closed. Council member comments? Who would like to go first? Gary, go ahead.
You want to go first? Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be brief, guys. I got just a few things, just want to mention.
Don't forget Bingo.
It's on the list. It's on the list.
Ding ding.
Just want to mention that the calendar winners are right back over here. Anybody who'd like to see them, we had a lot of nice entries that come in, and the Rural Arts Board did their voting last week. And they're numbered, which ones to cover and which ones made what months. So I just want to announce that everybody wants to see that. Real important coming up in August, excuse me, we have our budget workshop on the 21st at 7:00 PM. Is that on a Tuesday, Andy, or Wednesday? Tuesday. Tuesday. Real important, because this year's budget, we're going to get into that a little bit here. And I don't want to preempt anything, but it's real important that, you know, if you're concerned about it, you really need to voice your opinion. We've got Bingo at the barn, the Parks Foundation's putting on the 11th, the Saturday, at dinner's at 6:00 PM, and Bingo's at 7:00. And I don't see December, so, but tickets are generally available at Town Hall. And also, the individual board members have it. And we also have the property appraiser on Monday, the 20th, August 20th, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM, here at Town Hall. And if anybody wants to have any concerns regarding their homestead exemption or an ag exemption, something to that effect, that would be a good time to approach Marty Care's office, who's always there whenever we need him and answers your questions very readily. We have our next hazardous waste event at the Rolling Oaks Barn in September, the 8th. So I just want to mention that. And our next Flowmobile will be on the 23rd, on a Thursday, from 10:00 to 2:00 coming up. And I will close with that, Mayor.
Awesome. Dee, you want to go?
Just a couple of things. Attended the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association meeting last night, and pretty much, we were all there. And I would like to express my condolences to David Kaczynski and family. His father just passed away. So again, you know, it's not an easy thing, losing a parent. I also attended the South Florida Fire Convention there, where Julie received her award. And being there, I run into, and this reflects on what we're discussing right now, what's going on with the comp board as far as the landscapers and nurseries and all that. Until she can sit down with our town attorney and hammer this out, a lot of stuff that they discussed, she just had a very negative, what's the word I'm looking for? She pretty much told me, well, some of the stuff that was voted on, like we had discussed, five acres. You can't do that. That's what she told us, right out. You cannot do that. So I think putting it back to the comp board for whatever time it takes, until they can hammer out all the language, because George just said, "We want to get it right." And once you get it absolutely right, believe me, you'll find something else that's wrong. So you try to get it as close as you possibly can. I think that's all right now. If not, I'll jump in again.
Okay.
Steve?
Thank you. Just a couple of things as well. I wanted to say that, yeah, I think the comp board appreciate their time, but it does, you know, since we started this, what we're always looking for is that balance that will protect the residents from some of the abuses that we've seen recently. But also protects those folks that this town was really built on. And the nurseries and what was this really, the pioneers that started this. So we got to find that balance. I think we all agree that we're not there yet. So we appreciate that board taking another look at it and working through it and finding that balance. The other thing I wanted to touch on was, I wanted to take an opportunity to express my opinion about the two charter amendments that are coming up on the ballot this November. And they are, one of them deals with, right now, we can, the town could sell property or long-term lease property with just three votes. The charter amendment will push that to five. So it has to be unanimous. And I think that's critical. I think we've seen some changes here recently where money is talking more than it has in the past. And where sites are coming up in neighborhoods that can destroy neighborhoods, but the money is there. And those sites now are being considered where they never would be before. And so I think it's critical that, if for nothing else, that there is that vote of that council member in that district who lives there, who, you know, knows the folks on that road, that can stand up and say, "No, that's not right. That's not right for our community." And that's going to, that means that it takes five votes. And that's why I think it's critical. The other one is changing the zoning, which is the same thing. It takes four votes today, it takes five. But, you know, the zoning only goes one way. It's always going to go towards more density and more commercial. And so it comes down to whether or not we're serious about protecting our rural lifestyle, or it's just a nice motto, just something that we like to say to, you know, impress folks. If we're serious, then I believe these things are essential. Thank you.
Frank?
Yes, thank you. First thing I want to talk about, this bulk pickup. I have excellent bulk pickup. Maybe I'm right in the middle of the town or something. So maybe we need to look at the schedule. Maybe they start always on the east side going west, and they don't get further west. Maybe we need to look at that schedule and see if they can alternate that a little more. And that's probably all that I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Couple of things. The awards dinner we went to on Saturday night was really nice. They did a great job. They had a lot of awards for different events, for different cities and towns. Parkland was there, Davie was there, Pembroke Pines was there. A lot of mayors were there. So it was an enjoyable time, nice event. The other thing I want to address is kind of what Steve said about the charter amendments coming up, that are going to be on the ballot when the election is. The two items are going to be, as he said, buy or sell real estate that the town owns or changing the zoning. Right now, it's three, two for one. You know, three out of five can make a change. Or unless you don't, we don't ever have anything or have never had anything put on an agenda that we weren't, if it's an important item, we've never had the administrator ever sneak something on an agenda to get it passed. We've always delayed something and made sure we had the entire council present if it's a hot-button item. So let me state that for a fact, that that's never happened. I don't see that we would ever allow it to happen. And the other part about changing the zoning, I don't agree with either one of these amendments for 5-0. The other one's four out of five, it's a supermajority. And the reason I don't is it gives one council member up here the entire power to control. One council member. I don't have an issue with four out of five. I don't have an issue with the way it is now. But I'm not in support of 5-0, because it's just a little crazy. Literally throws handcuffs on you for residents. One of the ones the change would make, and it was at a meeting, and I'll bring, get the information to you for next meeting, or I'll write it in the newsletter. But at one of the previous meetings we had, one of the statements that was made related to the three out of five vote, and they want to go to five, is that they don't trust the residents. And you'll get to see that for yourself with the website or I give you to go to. And you can review that meeting and see how that was presented. So I would tell you that I would rather be able to go to the residents easier. So if something required a 5-0 vote, you all in the public would very likely never hear about it, or never even know about it, unless somebody called or informed you about it. So I'm not in favor in either one of those amendments. So I just want to state that moving forward. Anyhow, we have one election running, we have two guys running, Bob Hartman and John Eastman. You all know both of them, I think. So just a heads up. And congratulations on Gary on getting in unopposed. I'm good. Administrator, legal comments?
Could I just say?
You want to jump in?
Yeah, I just want to jump in here. I did get a ballot today. I always send for the absentee ballots. And, you know, there's two different ballots. There's the D ballot and the R ballot. Anyways, on one of these ballots, it has for one of your representatives, one of the gentlemen on there, I don't know, can I mention a name? His name is Carlos Reyes. He was a resident of this town for many, many years, an attorney, as you well know. And I do have it here, if anybody would like to look it over. I really want my ballot back, but you're more than welcome to look at it. The reason I send for the ballots every year is because I learned in the past, I go in there and I stand there like, "Duh." Because I've never seen it. I haven't familiarized myself with it. So I don't know if there's some way that the town can get the ballots in. And the election is August 18th, I believe? August 28th. I'm sorry. August 28th is an election. So maybe the town could get and have something in place so that people could come in and...
We can reach out to the supervisor of elections and share that information.
That'd be great. As far as what was brought up about the 5-0 vote, I also feel you're very much restricted on your 5-0 vote. In our world today is democracy rules. You know, the majority rules. And now you want to change that? Remember what you moved here for. Remember what was here before 2000. And it is true. Say we all decided we wanted something, and one of us said no. That's it. It's done. You don't have a choice. You own a piece of this pie. This is your investment. Even if you're not, and correct me if I'm wrong, even if it's not town property, if you bought for an investment with your money that you paid taxes on and everything else, your blood, sweat, and tears, it's kind of like it's landlocked. Because we won't let you do nothing with it. Well, I'm just expressing an opinion.
Saying it's only town property, it's not personal property.
So someone that owns personal property can request to have it rezoned and sell it?
They can sell it.
They can sell it. But we're telling you who you can sell it to. You don't get a choice. I'm sorry, unless someone can explain it different, that's the way I looked at it. You buy it, you better make sure before you buy it, you talk to everybody up here and find out who you can sell it to. Because you can't just sell it to whoever you want. You have to get permission. And if they don't want your permission, one vote stops you from doing that. So it's something to really think about. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
I apologize.
Go ahead.
I've got to jump in there because I, while, well, I respect what you're saying, I think it's misleading to the public. And so I need to express why I think it's misleading to the public. When you have a piece of property, your property, you can sell it to whoever you want to sell it to. The town is not going to get involved in that in any way, shape, or form. This is America. You can sell it to whoever you want to. Now, the buyer of that property, if they, if this is a residential area and they want to put in a commercial business, then yes, it has to get rezoned like it does anyplace else in America, you know? That's the way it works. The only difference is...
The only difference is, the difference is that rather than taking four votes now, it will take five votes. And I explained to you why I think that's critical, because money talks, and we are seeing that more and more, and if we are serious about protecting the rural lifestyle, this is a way to do it. And I think it's about the only way to do it. I have to make one other comment, that one, you know, as far as not trusting the residents, I implicitly trust the residents, and that's why another piece of this is that with the 5-0 vote, it goes to the residents for a vote. So absolutely, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the, the video or quote or whatever it is that's coming out, I don't know, it's not ringing a bell with me, but I'm gonna get on the record, I absolutely trust the residents. I don't know if it's about me or somebody else, but, you know. And the last thing I want to say is, as far as it not going in front of the residents, we talk about things all the, all the time that may not get to a vote, but we talk about it, you go to the board meetings, you go, everything goes through that process. Residents have input on it all the time. This is nothing about trying to exclude the residents. As a matter of fact, part of this is it brings it in front of the residents for votes. So I just, I, I respect the other individuals on here, but I just feel like some of the comments that were made were, were misleading at best. Thank you.
Well, I agree with Steve. I did, I didn't, I didn't phrase it white. It was a technicality. You can sell to whoever you want. You can. Whether or not that person can do anything with that property is a different story. But there are people in this town that are buying up property, they're going in for ag exemptions, and they're allowed. And as far as I'm concerned, they're no more than a Home Depot or a Lowe's. And if that isn't commercial, I don't know what is. And we do have commercial that backs up to residential. Do we just keep pushing it away and pushing it away until it goes all to 27? That's the only place we seem to want it. I'm not saying I'm for, for commercial, that's not where I'm going with this. I'm saying you are entitled, as taxpayers, to pick and choose. Why should you not be allowed to pick and choose? We don't actually do a survey and go from door to door and say, "Do you want this? Do you want this?" We basically listen to the people that really attend our meetings. We try very hard, and I, I'm not saying Steve is wrong in any way, shape, or form, we try very hard to be transparent. We do. However, I think a 5-0 is an overkill, and like I said, you're giving control to one person, and it should not be like that. We're five, we're a team, we're supposed to work together, and most of the time, by farming it out to all the different boards that are here, we get all the ugly stuff ironed out, so we don't have to fight amongst each other up here. Not that we would ever fight or anything, you know? I think we're all lovers and not fighters, but you just have to be careful of what you want. This means changing, what, a charter law?
Two charters.
Two charters. I was once told you can't, forget about changing a charter, it's, it's almost impossible. Nothing is impossible. There is no such word as can't, but it is your investment, it belongs to you, and no one should have the right to take that away. And you can let one person do that, you know? I don't know who would do it. I'm not gonna sit up here and say anything like that, but I will admit that you're right, you can sell to anybody. You can. It's just, maybe that person is not gonna be able to do anything with it, except throw some cows out there and get that old ag. If you all take the time to go onto the website or check, you will find out how many ag exemptions exist in this town. And you will also take and call Town Hall, and we have a finance director sitting over here, Mr. Sherwood, and he can tell you what kind of loss of revenue you have in this town. And I know we could, I know we could really use the money. It's going to be a tough budget this year. Thank you.
Can I jump in here?
Sure.
Yeah, one second. Let me, just for the record, let me read the ballot question, exactly how it's gonna appear on the ballot. Just let me read that.
Yep.
Okay, the first one. Should the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches be amended to require the unanimous vote of the entire town council and a referendum of the electorate, electorate means residents, prior to entering into any long-term lease agreement or sale of property owned by the town with limited exception? Shall the above described amendment be adopted, yes or no? That's the first one. The second one is regarding quasi-judicial and land use voting requirements. Should the, should the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches be amended to require the unanimous vote of all five council members for land use and quasi-judicial items? Shall the above described amendment be adopted, yes or no? It's very clear. It's very clear. If you want to make a zoning change, if you want to have a special request for a variance, you better have your ducks in a row, because all, all five council members need to vote yes for that, on that.
Right now, it's only four out of five, but they would change it to five.
They would change it from four, four to one to 5-0.
Right.
Okay? On the first one, on the long-term lease or sale of property, it's saying all five of us have to agree, and then the electorate, the residents, have to agree by 50% plus one vote. That's what that's saying.
Let me, let me join in.
There's nothing being taken away from anybody.
Well, hold on. I disagree with that statement, because right now, that exact same position you mentioned is a three, three out of five vote. So if it's a three-two, it goes to the ballot, to the people. So by making it 5-0, it never gets to you all to vote on it. So by making it a three-two, it's a whole lot easier to get to the public to vote on it.
That's absolutely false. Today, it's a three-two vote, period. Done. Done deal. Never, the public never even gets to vote on it.
Never has any input.
Never even sees it. This gets it in front of the public. The way it is today, three-two, done. Property is sold, commercial goes in, land is lost forever. Thank you.
No, no, that's on the supermajority vote. That's not on the, on the, on the land.
Three-two, the land is sold, four-one.
On the town real estate part, you're correct.
That's what I just said.
Okay, but it sounded like you're referring to the change of the four-o vote.
Do we have a legal comment on that?
There is no four-one on the sale of property for town.
Absolutely not.
It's a three-two.
Correct.
Or even worse. It can be theoretically worse if you have a minimal council.
But we're very transparent, we're not gonna discuss anything without the public knowing.
We've never, in the history of the town, ever had a hot-button item agenda and not have the full council.
And I, I agree.
Never happened, and I would tell you, I would demand the administrator to never have anything put on the ballot or on a, on a.
Agenda.
Item, or on the agenda that we weren't all here for, so.
All right, let me ask you, every one of you up here a question, see if you can answer it. Can you guarantee that five years from now? You can't. You can't.
There aren't guarantees in life.
No, but this is pretty ironclad.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it gives, it gives one person control of the council on two hot-ticket button items anywhere along the line.
It does not give one person control, it gives five people the control.
Yeah.
That's what it does. They keep.
I don't know how you get the five.
Five.
If you, if you have four people in favor and one votes against it, you don't have a chance.
And that's the way it is for zoning today, so.
No, it's four out of five.
What I'm saying is, is that you have to get the majority, you have to get four out of five, five out of five, you have to, you know, that, that's the way, that's the way it works, and so.
It is, but five out of fives, in that scenario, it's almost impossible to get.
There's a correlation, or there should be a correlation between how critical a vote is and the level of endorsement that it would require. And today, to be able to sell public property out from under the residents, it's three votes. It's probably the single most critical thing for our town to be able to sell property, and oh, by the way, we had a situation come up in the last 12, 18 months, where two, where we had two of the five votes. One more vote and a piece of property out at the corner of Dykes and Griffin would no longer be town property, it would have been sold. So that's what brought it to light. That's what made it so critical that we passed this charter amendment, because we were one vote away from losing property in our town. And so, yeah, so for something that important, that critical, it makes all the sense in the world to have a unanimous vote, to have the opportunity, as I said earlier, that if it's in your backyard, if it's the property next to your house, that you can go to your council member and you can say, "This is completely unacceptable," and they can stop it. That's why it's critical.
Anyhow, well, we'll be discussing this item probably till the election, at public comment. So just so you know, we're not addressing the public, it's the only time we all get to talk up here. We can't have a discussion or discuss any of this stuff outside of here, it has to be an advertised public meeting, so this is the only chance we get, so we air it out. You're gonna see articles written in the newsletter related to it moving forward. Gary's already written one, I'm sure Steve's writing one.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me jump in for a minute. Keith, can you clarify the ballot questions?
Legally.
We're in some murky ground.
Yeah, I, I actually think the way it was written was pretty clear, so I'm surprised if, if there is confusion. But by way of background here, you know, this debate, it turned to Russell, it's almost déjà vu, because this was an ordinance that came before the council in May of 2017, in June of 2017. The language changed between the first reading and second reading of the ordinance, and it was adopted unanimously by the town council in favor of putting it forward on, on the ballot. So I just want to give you the background of where it started.
Let, let me jump in and say something. I voted in favor of it, because if you're not on the winning side of a vote, you can't recall it or bring it back.
Correct.
So the reasoning behind me voting yes, so he's mentioning the unanimous consent of the council, was so if I chose to, I could recall that item back and hear it. If I was on the losing side, I wouldn't be allowed to do that. So there's a method to the madness on that. So I don't want you to think the unanimous consent of the council, my reasoning was in case I wanted to bring it back, so, but normally I would not have been in favor of it, but I didn't, it doesn't give you any tools in your toolbox if you're the, on the losing side of that. So I want to educate the public a little bit.
I, I want to correct that, you voted no.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you said unanimous, so.
Well, that's what Russell told me.
Normally, I would vote no, but you said I voted yes, so.
I know, I just want to correct that, because Russell told me unanimous, it was four to one.
Okay.
In the first vote, he said it was unanimous, the second one, it was four to one.
Okay.
So I just want to mention that, he just looked it up. So thank you for the correction.
But on the explanation, was I correct?
You were correct on your explanation.
Okay, thank you.
On the rehearing. The, the ballot question, as you all are saying, there, there are two, they do two simple things. The first one, you're all correct, that a majority of the council could sell a town property or long-term lease it, or lease it, by a simple majority vote today. So if someone came forward and said, "We want the Equestrian Park," I know there has some grant requirements, I'm just throwing that one out there, because it's least controversial, if there's only three people on the, on the, on the agenda, on the, on the council that day, to one vote could lease that property or sell the property. It's a majority vote, however you look at it.
It is, but we've never had an item of those items on the agenda and happened like that.
Never, but, but they're asking potential.
No, no.
It's a majority vote. So what, what that item does is very simple, it says that in, when town owns property, and this is not certain properties, we excluded, like rights of way, you know, if someone needs an easement back, if someone, even we excluded the CCA property, because it was bought for different reasons. If we foreclosed on property, that's excluded. So it's basically if the town bought property to preserve its open space, which is the majority of the property purchased, with the exception, I think, of five acres, you know, that the town council would require unanimous vote before they would be allowed to sell that property, and then if it passed by unanimous vote, it would take a referendum of the electorate to confirm that they wanted to sell or long-term lease that property. So what that did is it created a, a two-step mechanism to protect the town on, on whether or not it was making the proper decision for what you guys wanted, I'm not taking a position on it, but it was whether it passed the council unanimously, and then it would be up to the electorate. If the electorate said yes, it would sell, if it said no, then it, they, the electorate would quash it. That's what that one was. Any questions on that ballot one, Dee?
No, but that would apply to the CCA property also.
No.
Why not?
The CCA property was excluded by the council in the ordinance.
It was excluded?
Excluded. Yep. There were certain exclusions, rights of way, easement, CCA property, you excluded.
It was mainly aimed at the five acres connected to the 22 acres.
And parks. That's what you guys decided.
Okay, I wasn't involved in it.
Yeah, you voted, Dee, you voted for that.
So it, it's in the ordinance, it excluded that property. So the second.
Gary, I'm 65, I can't remember anything. You have your memory.
Don't feel like the Lone Ranger.
So the, the second ballot question is pretty self-explanatory, and it's kind of interesting. I can't remember a time when the council has not been unanimous on a land use and zoning item, really. I can't. But despite that, originally, we were asked whether or not essentially major land use and zoning items could go out to referendum, and my response was, "No, legally, I did that for another city once, and I got killed by the court, so they had to do away with that, so you can't do that by referendum anymore." So then it came back, "Well, then can we require unanimous vote of the council?" And that you can. So all that ballot question does is say that if there is a quasi-judicial or land use item that comes before the council, it requires the unanimous vote, 5-0, not unanimous vote, five affirmative votes to adopt that item. I understand the arguments both ways. I understand the mayor's argument that the last vote, you know, the holdout, could potentially tank the item. I also understand the, the contrary, contrary side to it, that is, if everyone's not on board, it shouldn't get adopted. That's why it's going to the electorate for approval, and, and I think both arguments are self-explanatory. So those are the two ballot items. Councilmember Jablonsky, I hope I answered that question properly, but I, I didn't think there'd be that much confusion on them. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer, but there's definitely polar positions here, and that's why, in the end, it will be up to the electorate to decide.
I think we're good for now. Go ahead, you're in legal comments.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
It's in your lap.
Again, I guess everyone will be out voting in November, so. You know, the, the summer is normally a slower period of time, but from a legal perspective, we've had fun with the office of the inspector general. As you all know, that they conducted for two years now, almost two years, an audit of approximately a little over 75 to 90 million, I guess, Marty, of waste contracts, every contract, every, every procurement in the town, but then they focused on, on waste, and they've been looking at waste now for about a year and a half, and that would be collection and disposal contract, which equates to more than 75 million of town revenue over that period of time. Last time I reported to you that they felt of the 75-plus million, that they thought they came up with about 60 million, 60 million, 60,000 in potential charges that maybe shouldn't have paid by the town, and I commented to you all, "Good," you know, they did a good job on that, and then they continued their investigation, and we're now six months down the line, and they're, Marty has spent countless hours providing them document after document after document of them looking at every payment ever made by the town, and they're closer to an end of their investigation. What I believe is going to happen is that they're gonna come out and say that closely 60 to 80,000 in dollars over that 75 million dollar plus was probably wrongfully billed to the town and paid by a combination of the waste collection and dispo- to the town and paid by a combination of the waste collection and disposal vendor, and approximately $20,000, give or take, on the commercial side that they bill directly to the commercial customers were improperly paid. That's over a significantly long period of time. The town has withheld 68,000, almost 70,000, from its final bill to the vendor, so the town's really not going to be out, you know, anything as a result of the finding. I'm sure that when they come forward, they're going to give them, themselves a lot of attaboys over the two-year process that for a 75 million dollar contract, they found a small amount of wrongful billing by the vendor. And if I tell you that the wrongful billing, in my opinion, was not done purposely or intentionally by the vendor, one of it was a clear mistake, I think the number was supposed to be like four, five, eight, zero on, on, on a number, and they transposed it and it said four, eight, five, zero. So it was just one transpose of one number, when it got calculated, equated to a $20,000 mistake, but it's nothing that anyone in reality could have ever picked up when you're looking at thousands of pages of documents that they transposed one number slightly. And then in another case, there was a rate change, and there's a debate going on now whether or not the fuel index on an average, where the average was taken, when the fuel rate rose and didn't rise, and even our waste vendor is challenging that with them right now, telling them that they don't agree with that. So I just want to give you a heads up of where it's at. It's my hope that their investigation will end in, in August to September. That will be a two-year audit of every record in this town, which is very impressive when you look at it. They're going to write a report that will say that, you know, the town missed the $70,000 of, of, of charges by the vendor and that we should put better safeguards in place, but I will tell you that we have a, and I've now sat through meeting after meeting with finance, we have one of the best safeguard processes I've ever seen in checks and balances, and if that's what they found, Marty, how much is that total combined contract that they looked at? Was, it was over 75 million? What was the number?
The total, they expanded through the full seven years, is in excess of $90 million. So if 100,000, you're looking at, you know, 1 one thousandths of 1 percent, and of course, from a finance perspective, we would hope to never find any errors or regularity, but clearly what council is, has represented, it's nothing alleged criminal in nature, it's purely an error, but that's excellent in regards to a percentage.
The, the good news is that in the end, this investigation will finally end, Marty can get some hours back, and the town was well-protected by keeping the money owed to the vendor while the final audits were be, taking place. So the town is well-protected in this one, and I'm just giving you all a heads up because when they come out with their findings, they'll probably make a big deal of what they did over a two-year period. Other than that, Andy, hopefully I covered it well, but please chime in.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'd add to that, Keith, is you and Marty talked about that 75 to 90 million dollars. Their review, just, I just want to give you a sense of what they were furnished with. They were furnished with every single procurement the town did over that period of time, every resolution, every con, contract, every purchase order, every check request, every check. So they, they have been able to go through every single thing we have done over those last seven years. So generally speaking, I think we've done very well. As a manager, I, I don't like a single flaw identified. However, just want to assure you all that, that we will use that information that they supply productively and constructively. If there's an opportunity to further strengthen the systems that we have in place and, and better perform and better protect the town, we'll, we'll use everything at our disposal to make ourselves that much better. So I just wanted to add that as well.
All right. Keith, Pines.
Well, Pines, actually, there, there's been a case going on relating to Wesley Clark that we've been monitoring it.
Still going on?
It's still going on. They're, they're getting ready for final closing arguments. It's not our case, so we've been monitoring it, sitting back, but it's not our case at all. Pines attempted to throw us in the case recently, but, but we managed to stay out of it to their chagrin. So CCA case and their council is starting to, now that summer's coming and going, they're starting to get active. I noticed today they set Ryan Greenberg for deposition, and they also are setting Kathy Byrd for deposition. So I'll keep you posted when those are set and, and when they occur. One other thing I mentioned, because I, I remember George Morris mentioned it, on the nursery issue, I'm also re-looking at that ordinance, not from a legality standpoint per se, but because trying to bridge the two sides together in, in harmony, which would be the, the true nursery operators that are there for true agricultural wholesale purposes versus those that are turning their establishments into a mini Kmart. And, and we can truly regulate easily the ones who are creating a full retail establishment, but I don't believe that our code quantifies them properly as being different, and they're truly are different. The state gives agricultural protections to, to those people who are true growers and selling, you know, wholesale and, you know, and then don't give protections to the ones who are retail, you know? So I think our code has to do a better job of separating the two so that both sides can live in harmony in which we can limit the activities of the retail sales, which is what's really impacting the residents with people driving and, and collecting materials and the landscape nurseries that are providing services throughout the town and lawn care, et cetera, while also similarly protecting those people who are active growers and are minding their own business and, and operating on their property. So, you know, I'm throwing that out there so that you know I may come back to you with a second ordinance that is coming from us, saying that we're going to try to potentially bridge both sides together and see your thoughts on that as well.
Okay. All right. Andy, you're up to bat.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything else this evening.
Okay. All right. Number nine, resolution. Russell.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a notification services subscription agreement with OnSolve Intermediate Holding Company, doing business as OnSolve LLC, providing for telecommunications, text, email, and other social media communications to town residents and businesses at a cost of $3,800 per year for a one-year term with the option of extending up to four additional one-year terms, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the board. Anybody have any additional input? Dee?
Okay.
No.
Oh, Steve?
Sorry.
Yeah, just, I guess I'd like a, a comment if I could from administration, from the standpoint that, you know, we've worked with a couple of these vendors and kind of our experience, and just you're comfortable going back to the previous vendor that we moved away. Can, can you address that and just, just give us kind of the administrative view on, on these two companies?
Yeah, if I may, and if I, if I can take you back in time to approximately a year ago during Hurricane Irma, you, all of you who signed up for the program, which was really critical for us to get information out to our system, to our residents, we used a system called Rapid Notify. We've been under contract with Rapid Notify, worked really well for us from an emergency management notification, getting information out to our residents. We're at the end of the life of that contract. We went out to bid again. Code Red came in at a better price than, than Rapid Notify. In my previous experience, Code Red was actually the, the premier system to be used. We weren't able to use them last time around because their price was higher. They came in at a better price. We're going to be able to use this for both emergency and non-emergency communications, and it will integrate with our social media efforts as well. So it's, it's really an improvement at, at an attractive price. This is certainly critical for us to get the word out in the event of, you know, some sort of hurricane or other natural disaster, and I'm actually really pleased to be able to bring Code Red forward for council consideration.
Great. Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Breitke?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 10.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, honoring 50 years of municipal home rule in the Florida Constitution and committing to an educational initiative to help Floridians understand this beneficial right and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any additional comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make it.
Go right ahead.
I think, you know, there, this, it sounds like another one of those humdrum resolutions that we do to honor something that's good, but, you know, just breezes right through. I didn't want this one to breeze right through because home rule is what gives us the ability to do what we do up here and be able to respond to the residents. What home rule means is that the state of Florida has given the municipalities the ability to make a lot of decisions where without it, the state would be making all those decisions for us. And so this is really important. It's what Florida municipalities have been built on for the last 50 years. It's something that is slowly eroding away, especially recently, and, and so it is important that we recognize this and that you recognize what home rule is so that when it comes up and it's talking about it being attacked or being whittled away or those kinds of things, that you understand it. It's really important. It really is. It's, it's the element that gives you the right to give any one of us a call at 2:00 in the morning and say, "What's going on in my neighborhood?" You know, and something needs to be done about it, and, and that we can get together as a council and do something about it, so.
But at 2:00 in the morning, call Steve.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Breitke?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 11, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. You want to do the-
I, I, can I give you kind of a prelim?
Go ahead.
11, 12, and 13 are all intertwined, and, and they are critical for our trim notice requirements.
Okay.
Marty Sherwood has prepared a PowerPoint presentation, one presentation which touches on all three of these areas. So what I'd suggest, if that's okay with you, is let Marty go through his PowerPoint, and then we can individually go through the, the resolutions, if that's all right with council?
That's fine. Andy, since the presentations totally combine, can we at least read all three resolutions into-
I would defer to legal on that.
Okay. I would like to read all three into the record now.
You want a motion and a second on each?
Yes, and then read them all, and then you can debate each one individually, but at least then-
Okay. So we're going to do it before he does the presentation?
Russell, I hope you got a glass of water over there. You're going to read all these into the record?
Okay.
Go ahead, Keith, read up-
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, and I didn't bring my glasses, so it's right. A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, setting the proposed millage rate and current rollback rate pursuant to section 200.065 Florida statutes and establishing the date, time, and place at which public hearings will be held to consider the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019 and directing the town clerk to file said resolution with the property appraiser of Broward County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue for the state of Florida, directing that a certified copy of this resolution be sent to the Broward County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector and providing an effective date.
Okay, the next item, item 12, is a resolution of the town council of the town-
I have a question. Want a motion and a second on each one before we go to the next one?
You can.
All right, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
Well, no, no.
Okay, we're going to do that at the end? Okay.
Item 12 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the preliminary fire services assessment relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing purpose and definitions, providing for the imposition and computation of fire protection assessments, incorporating the fire protection assessment report, providing for legislative determination of special benefit and fair portionment, establishing the rate of assessment, direct, directing the preparation of a preliminary assessment role, providing for an exemption for veterans service-connected, total, and permanent disability, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing an effective date.
Make a motion.
Second.
Item 13 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the provision of solid waste services, facilities, and programs to residential properties in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing authority for solid waste services assessments, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings, incorporating the solid waste special assessment methodology report, directing the preparation of an assessment role, providing for an exemption for veterans service-connected, total, and permanent disability, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Keith, Marty can start?
Yep.
Marty, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and our residents. Tonight is our hearing and council meeting process. We've been involved with the budget going back till February, and in my hand is the 178-page extra-large edition, all-time edition, that is available to anyone in the audience that would like to review it tonight. It is on our website. It is also located at our front office and has been there for the, for the past two weeks. We're right on schedule with the distribution, and tonight is the start of our hearing process, and that involves the initial and proposed operating millage, which you've just read the resos in place. As the town manager mentioned, we will go through all the slides all at once, then we'll take each reso individually. Going back to the budget process calendar events, these are remaining calendar events left open. Tonight is our prelim and initial solid fire, solid waste and fire assessment adoption. On Tuesday, as mentioned by Councilmember Jablonsky and council, is our famous workshop, our proposed budget workshop, that is Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM. On, our hearing process will start on September 12th at 6:00 PM. That'll be one hour earlier than our regularly scheduled council meeting, and that'll cover our first official public hearing for tentative millage and budget adoption, as well as the final fire protection and solid waste special assessment adoption. We'll do our advertising after that, and then our final hearing will take place on Thursday, September 27th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. And I want to thank also Rich Stumm, our controller here tonight, to help me on the slide presentation as well, that gives us a recap of our summary of our 1819 proposed rates and fees compared to 2017 and 18. I'll just read off our proposed 19 rate fees. The operating millage would be at 4.6548. Our Tisdor millage is .3342. As proposed, our fire assessment for the $43.46 increase, which is an approximate 8% per residential dwelling unit from the prior year of fiscal year 2018, and our solid waste, the proposed is $159.34 increase or greater, representing a 37% increase throughout all residential parcel lot sizes. Giving you all a little background on how the ad valorem property tax is derived, it starts with your market value that is someone is willing to pay and purchase a property. The assessed valuation is set by the Broward County Property Appraiser, and that is an estimate of what that number might be as of January 1st of each- estimate of what that number might be as of January 1 of each year. The assessed valuation, which is generally 10% less than the true market value, I'll give credit for the property appraiser for giving most parcels a 10% discount. You have your exemptions, homestead exemptions, ag exemptions. You come up with your taxable value. The taxable value is then multiplied by your taxable rate, your millage rate, and your millage rate and taxable value not only applies, although tonight is the local municipality taxable rate, you have rates that are posed with county, school board, special taxing district, and other children's services councils, South Florida Water Management District. So your taxes, it's important to represent, and that'll be part of my slides later on, that it's not all coming to the town of Southwest Ranches. Okay. Next slide, we're showing why an increase is needed in the millage. The first one presented is that our existing public safety services mandated contractual increase, we'll discuss this more on a separate slide regarding the public safety portion. A second component requiring an increase is the preparation for forthcoming potential extraordinary litigation. Third is a emergency line of credit. We activated that and the resulting interest expense due to Hurricane Irma. We have to set aside funds until we get reimbursed through FEMA and the state. Number four is we are facing a impact of newly imposed Florida statute 170.014, which granted a 100% fire assessment exemption to all vacant agricultural land. A fifth reason is equality of life and service improvements. That is regards to our program modifications, which we will also outline tonight. We have capital improvement projects we are recommending for funded. Number seven is just normal cost, cost of living adjustments. State of Florida per capita change in personal income at 1.0147. And finally, number eight is a contingency increase for, for our forthcoming budget workshop and public hearings. Now going into, as I mentioned before, the number one, the public safety services contract impact, and this is an excellent guide as to why we are facing an increase. Our previous contract expired in 17, and after extensive contracts and negotiation resulted in contractual increases for this basic but essential local governmental service. The police services fiscal year 19, direct impact alone on our general fund is 122,391. The maximum probable income from the town's net new taxable value is 15.7 or 16 million dollars. The town has a assessed valuation of 1,417 million dollars. That's a huge number with a lot of zeros, 1 billion. Only 15.7 million of the 1.402 billion is new development. The taxes derived from our new growth, what they call new growth, is 70,447 dollars. The equation is presented for anyone who wants to do the math. Ultimately, we are looking at a deficit for the police service portion alone as applied to the town's net new taxable value without a rate adjustment for fiscal year 2019 at almost 52,000 dollars. Now, this doesn't take into place numbers 2 through 8 that I've previously presented and, and will be explained over the workshop and the public hearing process. Okay, now moving on to our program modifications. We have eight funded in total. We have our information technology replacement program, contractual GIS technician services, which has no millage impact. We've highlighted and read those that have had millage impact and which do not have millage impact. Our volunteer fire department safety equipment, all no millage impact because that's part of our fire assessment fee. It involves our fire apparatus replacement program for the volunteers, which is new. Our communication equipment replacement upgrade to conform with Broward County requirements, SCUBA or SCBA bottle replacement program, and bunker gear replacement program. Two more program modifications are the volunteer fire department increase in shift personnel has no millage impact, that again is part of our fire assessment, and the recommended fire protection rate assessment study, no millage impact, and is approaching well over 10 years of age. That is why we've put it in as recommended to be funded. We also have eight capital improvement projects funded. The fire wells replacement and installation, the public safety fire rescue modular improvements, that would be more of a phase two, that's outlined in the book. And all these programs, I all want you to realize, if anyone has any interest, they're all detailed in this program, dollars, specifics, and detailed enough for you to get an idea of the reason and the necessity of the programs. We have the progress on frontier trails conservation area to be made, and then we have town hall complex safety drainage and mitigation improvements. That also has no millage impact. And then finally, our capital improvements projects. We have our TIS door, drainage improvements, and pavement, stripings, and markers program. And as a reminder, our TIS door expenses require funding separate from our regular operating millage. With that in mind, I presented the separate millage for the TIS door for 2018, 2019, the set aside, the annual at 450,000. It's .3342 mills versus .3612 in the prior year, and we'll go on and we'll explain more of why there is a decrease. The next screen gives you an outline of the proposed rate. It's important to understand, realize, we do require a unanimous consent tonight by all five of you to pass this rate tonight at total at 4.9890. Now, the combined rate impacts. Our operating millage, the proposed rate for the operating purpose at 4.6548 represents a .5261 millage and a $173 increase per 250,000 of taxable values. And this covers our increases in public safety services, our extraordinary and emergency items, the unfunded state mandate regarding the agricultural exemptions, as well as, as previously discussed, the program mods and capital improvement projects. Our TIS door, the millage represents a decrease, and the millage is a decrease because our funding went down 20,000, and our growth rate, when your numerator denominator decreases and changes, it impacts your millage, in this case favorably. So that's why that represents an $8 decrease. So when you net the two, the $173 less the $8 decrease as it pertains to the TIS door, we're looking at $165 per 250,000 of taxable value increase. Our residential fire rates, the proposed rate would result in a $43.46 increase per residential dwelling unit, and our solid waste rates that are being proposed will reflect this year full cost recovery with no further rate subsidy, subsidies, excuse me, as well as conservatively include the maximum impact from a potential solid waste or bulk waste contract tonnage generation true-up provision. And as indicated there, the true up, true down that comes later after the year starts, so we have to be conservative and set the rate where we have maximum exposure. Moving into fire assessment, our fire assessment is permitted per Florida statutes, chapters 166.021 and 166.041, and is adopted by Town Ordinance 200109. Ordinance 200109 requires that the annual rate be established each year. 10 homesteaded properties owned by total and permanent service-connected disabled U.S. veterans are proposed to be exempted tonight to Town Council. The town impact resulting from adopting this 100% tax exemption is 5,619.50 and would be absorbed within the general fund. And tonight, we're looking to adopt the initial resolution, which is needed tonight to adhere to our trim notice requirements. The next few slides gives us the historical rates, the four-year history, and our proposed fiscal year 2009 throughout, and, you know, a portion is a combined, our public safety services contract and our volunteer fire with all their recommended program modifications. First graph will show you purple is our residential, as outlined previously. Our green is our vacant agricultural. It's actually vacant ag that is totally, that has a building on it, is the impact there because the, any agricultural that has completely no structures on the parcel of land is completely exempt from fire assessment now, and has to be absorbed within the general fund. Blue line, next slide, please, Rich. We got our industrial and warehouse. You'll see incremental increases throughout all categories. The dark blue was the industrial warehouse. Our light blue is our commercial, and finally, our institutional, our nonprofit, and our churches are also reflected on the final line. Now, we recapped it on the slide with the increases, residential, vacant, industrial, institutional, commercial, they all have increases. I won't read them individually, it's there and available for you. The, moving into the solid waste garbage assessment, this is permitted per Florida statute, chapters 197.3632. The annual rates established from it is required by Town Ordinance 200208. The only residential parcels propose to be 50% exempted versus 100% with the fire assessment. To Town Council tonight are 10 homesteaded properties owned by total and permanent service-connected disabled U.S. veterans. The town impact resulting from this 50% tax exemption is 3,669.50, and that will also need to be absorbed within the general fund. And finally, the initial resolution is needed tonight for our trim requirements. Solid waste, our waste go by two components, solid waste and bulk waste. You see our solid waste, if Rich maybe has the pointer, he could point out on our solid waste screen where it's 318.95, that's all standard across the board and fixed. I don't know, does your pointer work at all? It's, it's tricky. Okay, you see the columns, solid waste cost per unit 318, all five trances, A, B, C, D, E, F. Now, where the play comes into part is your bulk waste cost per unit, and obviously, the bigger your lot size, the bigger the bulk component. So the $159.34 is the amount proposed for the smallest lot trans, 41,200 square feet. Let's go right on to the impact. The solid waste impact, as a reminder, over the past five years, that's 2013 and 17, the solid waste collection rate has decreased by nearly 35%, and the, but the contractual agreement ended. After going out to bid in 2017, establishing numerous contacts, substantial negotiation, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder required significant cost of service increases of 73% to offer the similar services. The adopted residential rates in 2018, that's the current year that we're in now, was smooth and was increased only 27% over all property categories with the utilization of 30894 in unrestricted solid waste fund net position. The fiscal year 2019 proposed average increase is approximately 37% over all property categories, and will result in full cost recovery for mandated contractual adjustments, including CPI and fuel indices, as well as conservatively includes the maximum exposure for a potential true-up generation factor. In the big perspective, over the long term, it's important to note that the proposed fiscal year 2019 rate for all ranges averaged higher than all the property rate ranges retroactive from 2012 by an overall average of less than 14%. So if we take the seven years, you go to 19 minus 12 for 2012, overall, we're 14% above the 2012 rate, which approximates, obviously, 2%, increase annually. And now, I'm at the conclusion, this is my last slide, and thank you all for your patience. It is your town administrator, town financial administrator's recommendation that the Town Council of Southwest Ranches unanimously adopt the resolutions presented tonight, setting the rate maximums, and which provide for increasing the operating millage, decreasing the TIS door millage, increasing fire assessment rates to property owners, and finally, increasing solid waste bulk and recycling rates closer to obtain, then maintain, a fully user-based operation. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Marty.
Did the public enjoy that? Was that educational? Should I have a public comment now, or? Public comment, folks?
Good evening, New Orleans, 199th Avenue. Setting the rate at 4.9890 is insanity. Every year for the last number of years, I can't even remember how many, when we've had a budget which was frugal, we have been empire building. And that's exactly what you're doing. Setting the rate at 4.9890 is absurd. If you'd go back a couple of pages where you see what the amount of inflation is, the maximum majority rate of 4.3910 gives you an excess over the inflation. That is where you should be if you're going to be frugal. Tell the administration, use the machete, not a dull butter knife. Because in the past years, we've used dull butter knives, not machetes, not being frugal. We have been building empires. And it's time this council got itself together, and we went back to where we used to be five, six years ago. Frugal. Frugal. And what we had to have, we did. And all the good little fluffs, we didn't. So 4.9890 is absurd even at this level, setting the maximum. Where it should be is 4.3919. That's where it should be. That gives you the inflation plus some extra.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. I believe what I heard, the number to be is your absolute maximum, correct?
Correct.
So I'll be at the meetings. I believe in the process. I have full faith and confidence in y'all to protect us from the budget boogeyman. Not you. But I, you know, I tend to agree with Noel that we've got a lot of people that are right on that edge. We don't want to push anybody out of town, and when I'm looking at this, it's a couple hundred bucks next year for me personally, and I don't like that. I don't think anybody likes tax increases. So do your best.
Any additional public comment? Public comment is closed. Back to the council. Steve, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, just for those that may not be familiar with this process. So we set the millage rate tonight at a maximum rate, as Bob was alluding to, and that's by state law, we have to do that. At no future meeting for this year can it go higher than what we set tonight. However, as we go work through the budget, should we find things that can be pulled out and placed to save money, it can come down. So it's kind of, it's a little scary, as I think I heard a comment out there, it's a little scary. It's a little scary at first when you see the millage rate come out because it's a significant increase, and then the process kind of works its way, and we see where it ends up. The one assurance is that it'll not go higher than this, but historically, it's always come down from this. Not to say that it always has to, but historically, it generally has.
Well, I'll jump in and join Steve on that one. We've always said at the highest max, it's never not been reduced.
Yeah.
So it will get reduced. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, let me jump in here for just one second. What this represents to my, what my concerns are is the average homeowner in town is going to have, if this went unchanged, like a $350 to $400 increase in their taxes per year overall, and that's not going to fly.
Right.
You know, and I think everybody up here is probably in lockstep with that. We've got our work cut out for us, as does the administration. I'm not speaking for anybody other than me, but I can pretty much, you know, after going through eight or nine of these budget cycles, you know, there is a process involved in this, and it doesn't sit well with me, but I understand we have, we have to do this because it's mandated by the state, and we need, and it will not exceed, and will be reduced. I can pretty much guarantee that.
Dee?
I agree with everything they said. I can almost guarantee that, I know everybody sitting up here has scissors, and we're not afraid to use them, and it really has never gone where we haven't reduced it. There's going to be workshops, there's going to be more meetings on it, so don't be scared. You know, it's, it's something that needs to be tweaked, like everything. And it's just, it is just a process that we have to go through, so try not to be too scared with it. I've looked at how mine would go up. That's all I can tell you. I don't want mine to go up either, so that's it.
Freddie? Freddie, you good? Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out and remind the public, and certainly all of you as well, you know, we've heard what you've said tonight, and, you know, Marty and I are bringing forward a proposed millage rate. But just to kind of recap the process, which started back in February and March, from a staff level, we've had individual meetings with all of you, we've gone to the advisory boards, we've talked to those groups, we've talked to the HOAs, we've talked to everybody. So the millage rate that's before you tonight represents more of a wish list, because what we do is we compile that list of projects that you as individual council members and collectively as a council want to see move forward. We get that input from the boards, we get the project list from the staff. We don't know what the millage impact is early in the process, we're just compiling a list. We don't get final numbers from the property appraiser's office until July 1st. So at that point, Marty's got to take this list of projects, take that taxable value, put all that into the sausage grinder, and come up with a number that we can set tonight. This is just one step in a long budget process. We'll get together in August for a budget workshop, we'll have individual meetings with all of you between now and then. So they'll, they're certainly, I would expect to see some revisions in that. Then we have two public budget hearings within September before we set that final millage rate. So tonight, as you've all pointed out, is one step in the process. I don't have any realistic expectations that this will be the final millage rate, but it is a process, but our state mandate is to establish this going forward, and so from that standpoint, we certainly ask you for your support tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Surely. Anyhow, I concur with everything everybody said. This is, I've been doing this for a little while, I went 10-plus years. So setting the millage is a standard operating thing we do. You always set it high, you can't ever raise it past that, can always come down. So it's never not come down, I can tell you that, and I'm confident that this one will equally come down as the past have. So we'll work through it. Hopefully, you all will take the time and opportunity to come out through those budget process stuff and learn more about it, understand it better. We have a book in town hall, if any of you want to come in and grab it and sit down in a conference room and look at it, you're welcome to do that, and feel free to call me or any one of us and ask questions. We all have our own budget book and can look up what you're talking about or whatever you'd like in that regard, and gladly discuss it with you, or explain it to you.
Yeah, just a quick question, Andy, is this, is this on the website?
It will be. I'm not sure if it is yet. I know that it will be. Marty, when do you expect to have it uploaded?
The budget book is, was on Monday of this week, but I can put the PowerPoint, I usually wait till tomorrow.
Okay.
For the PowerPoint, I will put.
Well, it wasn't just the PowerPoint. PowerPoint's great also, but the budget book itself, all the information is going to be online, or is it already?
It will be. Okay. It will be tomorrow.
Okay. All right. So other than that, you've had confidence in us in the past, please bear with us and work through this, and I think ultimately, you'll be happy with what the end result will become, so. Seeing that, we've got a motion and a second on all three of those.
Yeah.
So call the question.
Mayor, I'd ask that we do each one individually, as we have different motions and seconds for each one.
Okay.
So this is item 11, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 12, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 13, we also have a motion and a second. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty, yeah.
Meeting adjourned. We're